All right, well, as we are about to get underway, our first item of business is even before we officially open the meeting, we have a public hearing on a local law regarding all-night parking at the Dexter Park, Dexter, Dexter Park Parking Lot. I'm going to ask, is if anybody is present virtually and you would like to speak to this item, please give me your name in the group chat and I will call on you. And the proposal for this local law is to designate all-night parking, odd night parking, five spots on the southwest corner, evening night, five spots on the northwest corner. I believe the information is online, if there's questions. So we'll call the public hearing officially open. Public hearing on local law regarding all-night parking at the Dexter Park Parking Lot, and the public hearing is officially open. If there is anybody present who would like to speak to this topic, please put your name in the group chat so that I can recognize you. It's a hot topic. And I'll give a little bit of time then. Second call, anybody present that would like to speak regarding the potential to have overnight parking on an evening at the Dexter Park Parking Lot? Would you like to speak, then please put your name in the group chat. My name's in the group chat, but we will make a third and final call. If there is anybody present that would like to speak. And this is the public hearing regarding a local law about all-night parking at the Dexter Park Parking Lot. We're talking about five spots that can become overnight on odd, odd evenings, and five spots that will be overnight on evening evenings, meaning after midnight, whatever the date is, or evening. Anybody present to speak to this topic? Hearing none, seen none, we'll call the public hearing officially closed. And with that, I think we need a break, because we're waiting to call in the meeting's order. I ask that everybody can please rise if you're able for a pledge of allegiance. And once again, I am going to mute everybody. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, serviette, and justice for all. We have the opportunity for public comments, and similar to the public hearing, if somebody is present and they would like to address the council, we ask that comments be limited to three minutes in length, and they deal with topics that the city council is able to address. Please put your name in the chat. We'll have public comments at the start, and if there are people at the end, you'll have an opportunity at the end for public comments. Looking and not seeing. I'd like to move on to a proclamation, and this is about our quest to become the votingist city. Whereas the Portland, City of Portland County Council vigorously and proudly encourages our community's efforts to become the votingist city in the state for the upcoming 2020 election. Whereas this effort is a unique opportunity to increase voter participation in the presidential election, have some fun, and participate in a lighthearted, joyful competition among other counties and cities to see which will have the highest percentage of eligible voters turn out to vote, and which have made the biggest improvement in voter turnout since the 2016 presidential election. So these efforts will be enhanced by many local organizations, including the League of Women Voters of Portland County, the YWCA of Portland County, City of Portland Office of Civic Engagement, Zanta, the AAUW, Access to Independence, and hopefully others, all are currently engaged in voter registration efforts, voter education, and voter mobilization. Whereas more than 100 students were registered to vote by several of the above organizations with a robust voter free registration, law now allows 16- and 17-year-olds to do this, and voter registration effort in the all-throughup county high schools that was halted by the coronavirus pandemic. We honor our democracy by remembering our democratic struggles and those who have worked tirelessly for voting rights. And we honor the 100th anniversary of the passage of the 19th Amendment on August 26, 1920, that gave women the right to vote after more than seven years of struggle. And we honor the very long civil rights struggle to ensure voting rights for everyone and oppose all efforts to suppress people's rights to vote. So be it resolved by the city council, we hereby declare September 22 of 2020 National Voter Registration Day, and be it further resolved if the entire city commit to the challenge to become the votingist city in the state. And we're not telling people who to vote for or where to vote in terms of your interests, but participation in democracy, participation in the process. Very good. And Kat McCarthy, another topic. Kat, did you have something to share with council and with the public?
Yes, thank you. So I wanted to share that the Portland Reuse Initiative, it's a group that's working to start up a nonprofit reuse center here in Portland County, is working on a deconstruction in partner with, in partnership with Finger Lakes Reuse. So they are actually taking a building that needed to come down, instead of demolishing it, they are deconstructing it piece by piece. And I've been involved in it so far, it's been a great initiative, you may have seen the article in the paper, but the group is still looking for additional volunteers to help. So if anybody's interested, you can learn a little bit more on the website, portlandreuse.org. And that has information about the volunteer shifts that are coming up the next couple of weeks, week or this week, as well as the next few weeks, looking for help with that. So, thank you.
Very good. And the deconstruction, I assume we are repurposing the materials, a lot of the materials that are coming down?
Yes, all the materials that can be, will be salvaged for reuse and put back into the community, basically, made available for sale.
Very good. Next up, looking for approval for four minutes from July 7 of 2020 from the American motion to consider said minutes from our last meeting, Katie Sullivan, and we have support. Right back with discussion on the minutes, are there any requested changes or alterations for the minutes before we file them? Tom, I cannot hear you, although it does not say that you are muted. There we go. Gotcha. Resolution 138 has no names attached to it? What do you mean, has no names? Are you looking at the same? Are you looking at 137? Are you talking about who made the most?
I picked those before they went. They went out before those were added, so it's already fixed.
Okay, so Resolution 138, I had the original motion was made by Katie Sullivan and support by Bill Carpenter. So that was not my first draft, but that has been updated. Any other questions, concerns regarding the ministry council? Hearing none, all those in favor of filing the minutes as is, please say aye and give me a wave of your hand. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And we filed the minutes, that is 6-0, we have six of the eight. But I'm going to call. So agenda item number one, and it reads, consideration of resolution to bring city employees back off furlough. I'd like to alter the wording, consideration of a resolution to allow the mayor to bring the city employees back off, that off of furlough according to a two-date schedule. So we're looking at some for July 31 and some for a later date. So asking council for a motion to consider said resolution. Jackie Chapman, second, John Bennett, discussion.
So, as everybody knows, we had a lot of difficult challenges, and we made some very difficult decisions way back in March. The financial outlook was extremely bleak, and in addition to budget cuts with regard to programming and some other things, we also furloughed 18 employees. And this was not an easy decision for council, it was not an easy recommendation to come forward with to council. I am very pleased to say that financially, a lot of what we have done has had a, has had a positive impact in terms of bottom line for the city. I'm also disappointed to say that we know that we are still somewhat short, and the steps that we took were absolutely needed and critical. We did the same things that a lot of private businesses did, we did the same things that a lot of nonprofits did, and we did the same things, and a little bit more in advance than other governmental entities did. Unfortunately, federal legislation has given support financially to nonprofits, to private businesses in the form of loans that can be converted to grants. Larger cities were also afforded some funding through that federal process. Unfortunately, the City of Portland did not qualify for any federal assistance, and we know that the state, having not received any financial assistance, and it's not been scheduled at this point for there to be any assistance from the federal government, I'm optimistic that conversations continue, but we're getting close to August, and those decisions have not been made at the federal level. So we took a number of steps, we tightened our belt, and the city as a whole has been functioning, and we've managed to accomplish the tasks that we set out to do over the last four months. However, it has been a strain. It's been a strain for the individuals who are furloughed, it's been a strain for coworkers, it's been a strain for the department heads, and every employee that has been furloughed has been missed and has been needed. So the opportunity to bring everybody back is an important one. And I have emailed to council, and what I'm asking for council to do is to give me the approval, to bring back the majority of approvals at this date and time, maybe July 31, and then to bring back several others at a future date and time to be specified. And what I would like to do is to take that action tonight, be able to talk to the individual employees, and then be able to talk publicly about where we are in terms of positions. Council, discussion?
Ryan, I have a few things. I received the email today with some concerns. Most of the concerns are probably related to youth, but a lot of them are going to be related to other departments. The biggest concern is that somebody comes back and has to quarantine for 14 days after they start back to work. I guess, this is quite lengthy, so I won't get into all of it, but I think we're going to have to have some policies, policies in place when these people do come back that we need to work on. And I think, I guess, if you haven't outlined who you're bringing back yet, I think we need to have a meeting amongst ourselves to go over this, a lot of this, a lot of these issues that are concerning to me, and that we'll all be aware of. Somebody does get exposed to that work, and they have to go out and quarantine for 14 days, are they going to get paid, are they going to require use of sick time? That's one of the biggest concerns.
I'm going to defer to Rick.
Yeah, do you want me to address these, Troy, or do you want to just say them all, and then have you sort of address them as you go? We have guidance for speeding work, although the quarantines are pretty clear.
Okay. I think what I'll do, Rick, is I'll get you, I'll get you these, all these, you know, I'll send you all these in an email tomorrow, and then respond that way, because it's quite lengthy, but they do need to get addressed.
Agreed, and I don't want to go into the unaddressed. The quarantine protocol is very clear, and we have that in place, we've had to operate with it with some of the locations people have taken it. So it's not something we haven't had some experience with over the last couple of months. So yes, get it to me, and I will reply to all of the aldermen and Brian.
Good, yeah, and I'm confident that some of the questions that you're asking, we have answers, that we are following protocols. The state has been quick at times about providing directions, but sometimes very quick about expectations and a need for a little bit more guidance, but we're in unprecedented times, so we continue to work to move forward.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I understand all that, I just, you know, it's concerning for some of these people, if they do come back, what's going to happen, they got to get furloughed again. And so I will get this on the red tomorrow, we'll open that.
Very good. Katie Sullivan. Uh, hang on. I just tried to unmute you, but...
Will we discuss why, why, what the weight of the people gets you all the way down?
The financial considerations are still in, and with what we've done, it brings us closer to where we need to be to a balanced, for a balanced budget at the end of the year, but we're not quite there.
Well, why zoning, for instance? Why not bring back zoning? That seems like a pretty key position to bring back.
I, in terms of speaking broadly with physicians, with what we are currently doing in terms of the steps that we've taken, that we're in a place that we can bring back some employees sooner, and some we might need to wait a little bit, because in terms of the financial considerations, it will help us in the long run. And with regard to some of the work with different departments that weighs in as well. So in terms of some positions, I think we can work a little bit longer with where we
I'm just having a hard time because I've talked to a lot of people about this, and the email came in pretty late, and I just now read it at the beginning of the meeting. And so I didn't really hear anybody talk about two of these positions, about why there was a need. I attended a meeting with the chief financial officer, and he had a pretty good argument for bringing everybody back, so I'm just not sure what the rationale is. When, when would those people be brought back then? I just, one would be mid-August, correct?
I would target August 14.
For all of them? Sorry, I don't feel up to speed on this.
Tom Michaels.
I, I kind of get an idea where Katie's coming from. If you recall, back in the beginning, we had a list that went by department as to who was going to be furloughed, and we don't have that list going forward, as to who we're going to bring back. So I'd like to, I'd like to see the list before I make any kind of decision as to who we're bringing back at this point, and that we justify their, their job actually when they do come back. I see that we had received some TIPS money and some grant money that needs to be used up regarding DPW workers, but I don't see any, any other money coming in to support some of the other workers at this point.
So these are, so some of the decisions, and I've communicated, I've spoken with most of you over the last couple of days individually, and in some of these conversations, there has been changes as we're looking at different criteria. For example, the sales tax monies, sales tax receipts are a big part of the decision-making process, and typically they've been released, not this past Friday, but the previous Friday. They didn't come in until last Monday, so we have a shorter timeframe to really have an understanding of what the sales tax numbers, so the June numbers coming in in July, look like. So there's been a little bit of scramble in terms of looking at the numbers, and I know that when I have spoken to you, that we've got eight people on council, and there are differing opinions, and there's differing thoughts in terms of how we're bringing back and how many. My recommendation to council is to give me the authority to bring back the majority of the employees July 31, and then targeting August 14 for a handful of others. Katie Sullivan.
Have you decided who you, who's going to come back, and have you talked to department heads about that, and have those people been informed? The people who are not coming back, possibly depending on this vote, have they also been
There's been a couple of conversations, I've talked to department heads, and I cannot state for certain if every employee has been contacted. There's some that I have been in direct contact with, and there's some that I've been in contact via department heads, so I cannot state unequivocally, and that's why I prefer to stay away from discussion about individuals, and so we can have the individual discussion with people. Kat McCarthy?
Thanks. So I've also had several conversations about this, and, and, you know, the impression that I've been given, or what I've taken away from those conversations, is that we are currently in a budget situation, and currently in a situation with our staffing, where, you know, our staff has done an amazing job filling in the cracks for the last four months, but they are well understaffed, and really, people are starting to feel, feel that even more. I also understand from what I've been informed, that our budget seems to be able to take on the addition of bringing people back on, you know, and certainly, I've heard from the community, that they are missing certain programs that we've had to remove. So I think when we're looking at this, and we're looking at it at the big picture, you know, I think it is a good idea to bring, to move forward on this.
Further discussion. John Bennett? John, you're muted.
While I would agree, or I'd love to agree to bring everybody back, I'm very nervous. To begin with, one has to remember, the numbers are not looking bad now, but that's with the amended budget, not the adopted budget from back in last year. The adopted budget from last year, we are still well over a million dollars short of. The amended budget, we're now only 150,000 to 200,000 still, and we still do not know down the road what might happen to in funding, which, if the governor sticks to what he said 20%, that would be 400,000. Now, I do believe the governor is probably waiting and hoping for action from both houses of Congress. And if that was to happen, and if that was to come through, especially with the numbers that was suggested back in the spring, the city would probably be looking at about $900,000. But here are the, here are the unknowns. While some people think our sales tax comparison to last year has not been that strong, we're comparing last year's sales tax numbers, which do not have internet sales on it, where this year internet sales are in. So we will not get a clear picture of comparison to last year's sales tax until maybe September, because it was September of last year when internet sales tax first started to be on. Thank God, it's likely catch 22, but we ain't sure. Actually, on one hand, the sales tax numbers without the sales, internet would be much lower, but on the other hand, thank God for internet sales tax. I think the thing we need to worry about, and Troy might have said this, is I think it would be now okay to bring the employees back, but what happens if things really go off the rail again come the fall, and we have to shut down again? At that point, everybody on this council and in the city of Portland, all department heads and all employees know, we might have to shut things down again and furlough employees again. And I would think it'd step farther. Every department head should know, going in and looking at the 2021 budget, do not expect it to be the same as the 2020 budget. There's absolutely no way that, as of now, we can look ahead and be comfortable thinking that things are going to be back tomorrow. I have no problem supporting bringing back the people the mayor is talking about, but I'm doing it, crossing my fingers, and hoping that things will work out with that, knowing that there's an excellent chance that they may not. That's it.
So in addition to some of the things that John mentioned, we are down in usage in both water and wastewater, and a lot of that can be attributed to City Portland breaking in mid-March. When the college student left, the water usage decreased in the city, so we are down in revenue in both of those departments. Furthermore- Furthermore, as we look forward, we know that the college's reopening plan, if they come back in the fall, does have students returning to their hometowns after the Thanksgiving break, which would be approximately three weeks of usage that would again disappear. So we will have some hurdles that we will have to manage. On top of that, if SUNY does return and if they do have another dismissal risk fall before the Thanksgiving break, that will have a negative impact throughout our community. Not just water and sewer, but on businesses throughout the county. So there are a number of question marks that are still hanging on that. And I can tell you that there's a part of me that thinks we need to take stronger action in terms of managing the budget from here until the end of the year. But I firmly believe that the actions that we took in March and the work that has been done by city employees, the patience that has been exhibited by those that have been furloughed, has put us in a position where collectively working as a team by bringing these people back, we're going to be able to continue the needed and strongly desired services of our community. And it's not going to be easy to have a balanced budget at the end of this year. But as I stressed with our department heads, if I didn't have full faith in their ability and their commitment to our citizens as they've demonstrated over the past couple of months, then it would be a different conversation. But we're all working together. You can talk to any department and they'll tell you they need their people back. People have been working extremely hard to keep the city rolling as efficiently as we can. And the decisions that we're making are not made lightly. And I understand that there is going to be some disagreement and sometimes it might be between members of council, myself, and it might be between city staff and myself. But I take the responsibility of mayor as seriously in that I am the Chief Fiscal Officer for the city. And the end of this year, it's my responsibility to make sure that we are where we need to be. So I'm saying, hey, this is my recommendation and I ask for your trust and continued guidance as we go forward. Tom Michaels.
With all due respect, I think everyone would like to bring the personnel back. Many of you don't work in corporate America, so you don't really know how hard it's tough to work to pick up the pace where others have been furloughed. As corporate America does. We're doing our best to pull a line where I am. But once again, we did not bring everyone back as anticipated. I do think that we are kind of rushing things a little bit and I want to give this another 30 days to see what things look like at the end of the year. And that's just my personal thought.
Katie Sullivan.
I understand that there are projects that the DPW could do work on, infrastructure that they can be working on, grant monies that we don't want to get back. And I know that there are parents and kids who are looking forward to the youth bureau bringing back programs as well as the departments that are dealing with our personnel who do a lot of paperwork and just so much of the just the work that keeps the department going. So I am in favor of bringing back who we can bring back and I will do that discretionary decision with my vote.
Jackie Chapman.
It seems that the financial officer has done a really amazing job of pulling together and pulling from this and pulling from that and just doing so many things that could, with no problems for the rest of the year, it would turn out. We can be pretty sure that we're going to have severe issues probably November. The chances are we are. I mean, if history is going to repeat itself. I fully support bringing back the furloughed employees. The tax program is desperately in need of second person because the director has been doing everything at home with no help, which is sort of a mammoth feat. And in all the other departments also. The last thing is if we don't choose to bring back, we're still going to have, we're still going to have those problems in November. And the way the budget has been worked out, everything is covered. You know, if the tax falls through, if the 20% from the state falls through, you'll have those problems. But it just seems that in support of the city, in support of the community, to bring back the employees now is the best decision. Because no matter what, we are going to have problems, but we're going to have to juggle and figure it out and it may not turn out well. But why make the decision to, okay, don't bring anybody back, we'll hold on to, you know, our small bit of revenue? It just seems, that seems so much foolish. I fully support bringing back all the furloughed employees. In the status of fact, it would be possible.
Counsel, motion is on the floor. All those in favor, please say and wave a "aye".
Aye.
And those opposed? Four, okay, four, two, Michaels and Beckwith opposed, correct? Very good. Thank you all. Agenda item number two. Before I guess, right?
Related to that motion, I would ask that you entertain a motion to continue my authorization until at least August 14th relative to acting zoning officer.
Motion to consider extending Corporation Council's appointment as zoning officer until August 14th. John Bennett, support. Katie Sullivan, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Carries, six of them. And we will be communicating with employees. Agenda item number two, consideration of resolution to accept recognizing appropriate borrowing donations to the youth bureau and there is $500 from King's Daughter for some of the programs. Motion to consider. Captain McCarthy, second. Katie Sullivan, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Number three, resolution to appoint Captain McCallum as the City of Portland historian. Motion to consider. Katie Sullivan, second. Jackie Chapman, discussion. And our previous historian regretfully resigned from the position and we have somebody looking at the resume that is, I think, more than capable and actually good from recommended from our previous historian. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Carries. Agenda item number four, resolution to accept recognizing appropriate $1,094.40 in proceeds from the sale of 10 vehicles in a city impound lot that were classified as abandoned to equipment repairs to help pay for maintenance and repairs of the existing fleet in this year. Motion to consider. John Bennett, second. Katie Sullivan, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Carries. Number five, consideration of resolution to up the hiring fee for the waste water department. Bruce Adams. Bruce, are you here? I see you. There we go.
I'm sorry, was there a motion and a second? I missed it.
I did not ask for it yet, did I? Motion to consider. Jackie Chapman, second. Katie Sullivan. Bruce, if you can give a brief description as to why we're having this conversation.
So the senior account clerk in the wastewater department who was hired in 2012 is going to move south at her husband's bequest. They have already sold their house and she has informed me that upon return from furlough, she will work two additional weeks. There's a tremendous amount of institutional memory there and all of the people that are involved in the work within the department. If any of you actually look through the document that I sent out this morning, you'll see it is a plonking job and I can tell you that Ed and I have been able to carry not a lot of furlough. So we wanted to bring somebody in and take advantage of those two in order to allow the opportunity to train the new person in those things that nobody else really in the finance department is familiar enough with to get that training done in a reasonable amount of time.
Questions for Bruce. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. And then agenda item number six, it's the lifting of the fees. And number six is a resolution to hire a senior account clerk in the waste water department. Target hire date is 8/3/2020 in order to facilitate training of the new hire. Motion to consider. Katie Sullivan, second. John Bennett, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Agenda item number seven, don't go too far, Bruce. Consideration of a resolution authorized mayor to sign an agreement with Quadrant Viral Testing LLC Syracuse for testing the waste water from presence of SARS-CoV-2 viral RNA. This is a one-year agreement with a 60-day exit clause and the agreement covers weekly testing at the cost of $200 of stats. Motion to consider. Captain McCarthy, looking for support. Katie Sullivan. Bruce, can you give counsel and the general public a layperson's overview of what we're talking about?
So we have been involved in a program that was initially started out of ESF, Syracuse U and Upstate Hospital in testing wastewater for the presence of COVID RNA. This is a way of determining relative infection rates in the community. To date, we've had eight results so far, eight weekly results. There's been no detectable RNA. I did get a wrinkle yesterday and that is that transport of the sample might be an issue. Tompkins County had been transporting our sample for us. They are opting out of the program because they have invested in direct testing. I had arranged to have our contract lab out of North Syracuse transport the sample up there. Would be ideal that the company go into testing to pick it up from there. They seem to not be willing to do that. So my recommendation would be to, if you feel that this is a worthwhile thing, go ahead and authorize it and we will not actually execute it unless arrangements can be made for transport of the sample. I don't have staff resources to do that. I was in contact with Mike Ryan of the County Health Department. They don't have the staff resource to do it either.
Okay, that's a strong recommendation. Let me go to Troy Beckwith first.
Bruce, I have a question regarding this. Can you actually explain to me what, I know what the purpose is in this, but what are we really going to get out of this?
The idea is that you get a heads up if there is a an increase in the infection rate. And you'll recall from previous emails that since we have to date had no detectable RNA, based on the researchers' sense of what it would take to get a positive, we would have to have 12 to 13 infected persons within the sewer area of the county to even register. But in the event that we were to actually see that sort of uptick, we will get a bit of an advance notice of it over simply waiting for sick people to show up in the hospital.
Yeah, I understand all that, but you're not, nothing's telling us where this count comes from though, crap, just what, five municipalities use the sewer?
Four municipalities and correct. We don't do, we don't have the capacity at this point to do neighborhood style. Even in Onondaga County where I think they pivoted their collecting system up into five or six areas. I'm not sure if you would call that neighborhood testing.
So if a two Greyhound bus had got at 81 and they went to Applebee's and had dinner and then they all use the bathroom, how long is it going to take to get the test?
Currently, we're seeing results in about four days and also it's a one-a-week test. So the sample that goes out is collected 7:00 a.m. Monday through 7:00 a.m. Tuesday.
So meanwhile, the buses are back in another state and how many days does it take to sewer to get from one side of town to the other?
Just several hours.
I just, to me, I don't think we're getting anything out of this. Just not going to tell you who's got it, where it came from, what village, what town.
So as a reminder, part of the discussion when this was first introduced is if there is a potential spike in the community, there's a potential that people would be asymptomatic for a week possibly too. And the virus could be here, it could be spreading. And if that is the case, the weekly wastewater readings may be a indicator that would give us information before testing. So if people are hesitant to go and get tested or people are not getting tested or even if they are, it might be a week or two later than when the RNA may show up in the wastewater. Bruce, am I fairly accurate on that?
Yes.
Yeah, so there's no guarantees. This is we're looking at another potential standard of measure to indicate whether or not we have presence of COVID in the community other than the standard health tests. John Bennett.
Hey, Bruce, am I correct with the RNA? Let's say if, again, as you said, it would not show up unless there was 15 to 20 all of a sudden cases. Would the RNA show that spike before people are showing signs? Or, you know, would it show the signs, would it show the RNA as they are asymptomatic? Or do they be actually showing signs for the RNA to be detected?
I believe that people start shedding RNA fragments before they're symptomatic. And so in that sense, it does give a heads up. And so, in that sense, it does give a heads up.
Okay, so again, too now, as you say, we only, it only shows up if it's a good-sized spike for our county, which means fifteen, eighteen, whatever the number you said. So, that would give county health, and for example Guthrie, a heads up of maybe a week, a few days, that something is happening, and we can expect something to be happening down the road, correct?
Well, beyond that, again, my understanding is that many people, you know, young, healthy people can get this, be asymptomatic, not think it's anything more than a cold, and yet be able to spread.
Yes, but what I'm saying is if all of a sudden that spike comes in and you get the report, all of a sudden it's a spike, by getting it in advance before something does happen, and you notify the county health, and county health and the public can say, make sure everybody is wearing a mask, we can get the word back out there that there could be a spike coming, correct?
Yes.
Okay. As far as I'm concerned, even though we don't know who it's from, where it's coming from, any advance notice that might be out there that can help, I'm for that.
Katie Sullivan, and then Tom Michaels.
I like the idea of advanced notice. We have a lot of young people coming back into our county. Is this a contract, this is $10,000 though, even more, is this a contract that we can try for a few months and then quit if we don't think we're getting much out of it? Or are we locked in for the whole year?
No, and that is why I insisted on including a six-day exit clause. So, we are free to leave the contract with only six days or seven days additional obligation at any time during the term. And I did that for that very reason. I didn't want to obligate the department to $10,000 in expenses regardless of whether it turns out to be value people down the road.
Thank you. And you really can't, don't get any idea of where in the county the outbreak would be?
No, no. We're sending in a single sample of our composite intake. So, there's no neighborhood or even community breakdown. I am going to reach out to the, to our client communities, sewer client communities, and see if that is something they'd be interested in. It's quite expensive, so I don't think they would be unless a spike showed up. But, if a spike showed up, then they may be willing to make that expense. So, we'd be happy to loan the sampling equipment to do it.
Tom Michaels. Bruce, you're, have you come in and support that?
I'm sorry?
Is this money coming out of your budget?
Yes, and I do, I have budgeted sufficient lab testing monies to cover this.
Next, last question. Has it been any other counties that have participated in this program come up with positive results?
As a matter of fact, this, this program started out in Onondaga County, and they were actually able to track infection rates among the various sewer sheds that they operate. Onondaga County has five or six different plants, and so they were able to break up the testing in that way. And they, during the PowerPoint presentation that I saw, they were able to show high infection rate north of Lake Onondaga, which was associated with a nursing home, and then that went down, and they saw higher infection rates in the central city area. So, yeah, they have detected RNA, and were able to track it where it's occurring. So, yeah, it was a very interesting presentation.
Imagine. Actually, that question came up from one of our participants, a log-in, Nick May.
Yes, the mayor just notified me of that, so thank you for echoing the question.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any more questions for Bruce? All right. All those in favor, please say and wave a aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Five-one, Beckwith against. Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
And agenda item number eight, consideration of resolution approved the local law regarding all-night parking in Dexter Park parking lot. Motion to consider. Troy Beckwith, support. Katie Sullivan, discussion. So, as mentioned during the public hearing at the start, we're looking at five spots. That would be odd overnight parking, and five that would be even overnight parking in the Dexter Park parking. Another discussion. All those in favor say aye. Tom Michaels?
I'm going to bring this up again. My only concern is that we have people that take limited spaces. Don't be surprised if spikes in the high end at some point.
I'll go along with it for now. Very good. And then, Tom McCarthy?
To the point of the paid overnight parking, are there locations that we currently have that are unpaid overnight parking?
Odd even?
Yes.
Okay, so, without going through our whole park control, we have a mix of opportunities for paid and unpaid parking in the downtown four parking lots. However, the park parking lots are different, and my opinion, it makes sense because the goal of parking for both is different. Access to the parks, access to the downtown four. So, we're talking about a R2 neighborhood in terms of Dexter Park parking lot area, which is fairly residential, whereas downtown, more commercial apartment buildings, et cetera. But you can either get a residential permit where you can pay, and you can leave your car wherever you want it, where there is odd even parking for overnight parking. So, if you go, today's the twenty-first, you go downtown tonight, you need to park in even slot because it's after midnight, but you can park overnight until the morning time. So, we've got the combination, but it's the downtown ones. No further discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion carries. Six-oh. Agenda item number nine, discussion regarding painting of curbs, sidewalks, and city streets. So, this has come about because a request a couple of years ago was made to paint a curb, and there has been, have been further requests, and some possibly in response, and some just maybe unrelated. But, when we took a look at the code book, there's a section on graffiti, and potentially we could say, okay, any painting of, there's a sign of graffiti. But since there's nothing that explicitly talks about the painting of streets, curbs, sidewalks, I said, let's put this in front of council and have the conversation. Open a hearing, boss. And if you want me to get started, I'll say that the, I would support council passing the resolution, or at least the eventual, the local law, basically saying that any painting, writing, or artwork on public property, including but not limited to the street curbs, sidewalks, that's not washable by water, is not permitted without approval from the City of Portland County Council.
I think that's a good idea. Personally, I don't think, I'm not in favor of painting on sidewalks. I think we want a lot of different groups. We can look for more ways to do it than painting the streets and the sidewalks and the curbs.
It can be hard pressed to find some curbs to paint on, but sidewalks, we would, we'd pave one.
Last and open, other ones? Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Nick.
I'm all set.
So, I think that if we're going to move forward with something, we might want to also consider some sort of framework, if it's being left to council approval, some sort of framework for reviewing requests. Whether that's, you know, a set of questionnaire, criteria, or some sort of committee that kind of takes a closer look at each request. Because I think situations and circumstances are often different, and it's helpful to kind of have that closer look to do it on a case-by-case basis, especially if we're talking about public hardware and whatnot.
Tom Michaels?
No, I do agree with Ted, that we should have written some kind of, wrapped in some kind of framework moving forward.
And Deputy Superintendent of Public Works, Mr. Doby, has patiently been waiting. His hand up raised, Nick.
I'm just wondering if we could include, like right now, do you like a preliminary of banners and stuff? Should we probably include that and just make this seamless? It just seems like the right time.
That sounds good.
So, Nick Doby's recommendation that that goes before the public works, maybe?
That's really up to you guys, however you guys want to design it. Right now, you know, the applications come in, I review them, and I don't think we've ever not come up a banner that somebody wanted up. I was just kind of thinking if we're doing street scape stuff, if we could kind of include that. But I'm not sure if, I mean, in the summer, sometimes, you know, in non-COVID summer, banners go up really, really fast and come down really fast. There's a lot of events. So, I just wanted some direction on if we should include some kind of approval process to that as well. That's all. But it doesn't have to be super adept. I was just asking you guys if I can handle it.
I've, the council will indulge. One of the things that's pushing this, there's been questions about curbs specifically, but there's also been some discussions with regards to, I would call it a response to the city allowing the painting of Black Lives Matter at the corner of Main and Court Street. And as a reminder, the intention was in response to people in the community and demonstrating, first of all, to the community our support of all of our residents, and in particular, people who have experienced racism and that we value everybody. And the second intention, I believe, of having the painting done on Main Street was to continue a discussion about race and racism in Portland. And I, for one, believe that racism does exist, unfortunately, and we're committing as a community to eliminating racism in Portland. So, my painting, it has drawn attention to the topic, and it has drawn some strong reaction, both in favor of the painting and some against. So, I'll cut right to the heart of the matter. We have had a couple of requests within the last couple of weeks to paint something in support of law enforcement. And the idea is that Black Lives Matter is talking about, my part, people who are biracial, people of color, are asking to be considered at the same level as others. They're not asking to be treated any more than any other person. After Black Lives Matter originated as a group and as a movement, and I think it's also important for us to recognize that when we have this discussion, we are talking about our local residents and what's happening here in Portland, in our city. And we are working to bring everybody to the same level. The phrase "all lives matter" has come out since Black Lives Matter is a response. And to me, it is tone deaf because it is not listening to what people who are saying Black Lives Matter are trying to get across. And the response to that has been, well, all lives matter, and all lives are treated equally. So, there's been problems in terms of the statement of "all lives matter." So, we have had in the recent past couple of weeks, requests with regard to law enforcement, and there's two requests that basically have come forward. One is a mural, which I'm thinking might be along the same lines of painting their Blue Lives Matter or support the Fingley Thin Blue Line, and also request to paint a blue stripe on the city street. It sounds like it's the same, but it is not. And I'll tell you why I think that is the case. City of Portland, and I think I can speak for council and tell me it from wrong, but, Mayor and council, we support our city police department and law enforcement in general. We approve the BLM painting, as I previously said, in response to some of our community members, and also to start and continue a difficult discussion about racism. And we need to continue to have that discussion. We do currently recognize and acknowledge the good deeds and actions of our law enforcement officers. And I can give a couple of examples. Back in May, we had proclamations, what proclamations about recognizing law enforcement, both those who are currently serving and those who have given all in the line of duty. We have supported, and it's been a wonderful thing to watch, going above the nine-eleven memorial and the annual ceremony that our deputy police chief and others took the initiative on. In the fall, one of our offices established a community emergency services appreciation day. So, our city police has our full support in terms of that effort as well. And during times of difficulty, many of us do reach out and we show our support directly to our law enforcement officers. And I'll give you a personal example. When we had an officer shot in the line of duty, this was troubling to all of us. My girl's at home, voted a card, and I dropped it off. You know, we tried to do personal touches, and from talking to our officers, I know that was not the only problem. So, there's ways that we can all show our appreciation. One of the reasons why I think painting Blue Lives Matter, the Thin Blue Line by a third party, because again, this is not a request by law enforcement or our law enforcement dependent, and a reminder, police in the city, it's a city department, as is fire, public works, administration, youth, all. But this is a third party wishing to express their support. And honestly, I feel like we are pushing law enforcement into a position they should not be in. It's almost as if we're being utilized, in a way, in opposition to Black Lives Matter. And some people may not see that, but, as I've talked to people throughout the year, and the response has been, if you're talking about Black Lives Matter and you start talking about another group, the topic is changing, and it's taking us away from the conversation about the life experience of people in our community. And we understand the difficulties that law enforcement officers face, and we appreciate that they do. But my concern is that by doing something similar to what we have just done, it distracts from the first message, and it puts law enforcement in a position that is not where they should be. So, as this discussion is going on, I'd like to point out some actions that took place during the painting of Black Lives Matter on Main Street. Council, I think, is well aware that that evening, both our police chief and our deputy chief were present, I think for the whole night. They were there longer than I was. And they were not there in a really obvious way. They were off to sides. And the officers that I saw that evening were always very professional. And the officers that I saw that evening were always very professional and did everything they could to make sure that the peace was kept. The next morning, there was a late rain. The next morning, we had slated for the road to open at seven. And our chief said, he sent me a message saying, hey, there's a little rain, it's still damp, and what we'd like to do is to give it more time to dry so that it doesn't get destroyed right away. Could have very easily just opened it up, but made the decision about how to act. And I applaud our leadership, and I applaud what our officers do in terms of support. And I don't think we should be talking about supporting law enforcement in a similar way as something that we're doing on a different topic. In our community, I would suggest that people either acknowledge support about law enforcement by one of the previous methods that I've already mentioned, or maybe volunteer, work with our law enforcement and find out what they believe is inappropriate, and let's make it a unique way to show our appreciation as a community. Let's say a Law Person of the Year awards dinner is something that gives us the opportunity to recognize law enforcement in a separate way, because these are separate conversations. And we need to work with each other and reconsider it to each other's as we find our solutions for some of these questions and some of these problems. Counsel. Katie Solman.
I for one hate to see people get into a tit for tat painting streets. And I like your suggestion of supporting law enforcement in another way. We have, our police are making an effort to reach out to the community and become more of a community-style police force than they were before. And they do programs, and we volunteer to help them with the program. You know, paint only lasts so long. If you support the police, show them in the area of other ways. If you support the Irish and Italians who went to build Portland, and the Brits who came over and worked in the factories, then talk to the people who are going to be creating murals as part of the downtown education project, and maybe we can get a mural of historic Portland, something like that. We can think of more creative solutions. And please don't just get into a tit for tat, well, they have theirs, we need ours. That's not what this is about. That's not what painting Black Lives Matter was about. Painting Black Lives Matter does not negate any other group or community. It's not a either or. The point was lives being lost. The whole country was responding, and our little community came together to say, we too respect Black Lives, the matter to us. And I think that's pretty profound, and that if you just start rifling over the streets, we're going to, we're going to lose our way. That's my opinion.
John McCarthay.
Yeah, I agree with what's been said so far. I think that it's important to keep in mind kind of the purpose for this, and yeah, the fact that it's so unique. I mean, I think that there's a lot that comes along with painting infrastructure, you know, and we want to be mindful of that as well. And I think that, you know, there are a lot of ways to show support in the community. I think having some form of review process will help facilitate, you know, if there are future concerns, if we want to consider, consider future painting opportunities. Because my sense is that this is really kind of a unique and new thing that's been done as well. And so I think, you know, it's a little bit easier here when you have precedent to be able to say, well, it's only been done for these circumstances or these parameters. This is something that we've opened up, because we felt that this was really important for the community to show support in that way. So I would agree that we don't want to just, we really want to consider other ways to show support for different groups. But if we're considering future painting, it's probably a good idea to come up with a process for reviewing that as well.
So in terms of criteria, we're not saying people cannot, but we're saying there needs to be criteria. And my entreaty to council is that with regard to where we are and what we are doing, that there are some things that need to be addressed in different ways. And if we are going to look to allow painting, then just request being forward to council, and we can establish a process where a request to come forward to council, ask for support, i.e. a petition with signatures, and then a discussion at council about what is the intention and what is the meaning in terms of doing something, if it's a painting or a mural or something.
Tom Michaels.
I guess I agree or disagree. We probably should have had this discussion a few weeks ago before we moved on the other item, knowing that things are going to pop up where we should be recognizing other groups. We've got a community that also do a fantastic job of what they do. And so that being said, that we do need to look at some other means to recognize these individuals. And I certainly wouldn't rule out hanging something again. But there's another thought, that we also have those banners that hang on the lakes all around Main Street. Perhaps we could do some kind of recognition there for each one of our departments.
Very pragmatic suggestion. Thank you, Tom. But we might disagree, but we also agree.
Well, I'm against petitions, because we didn't do that when we first added them a few weeks ago. So I'm not sure how to get around this, but creating more of a hurdle after the fact would just kind of stall the progress of what should be done.
I would say it's the evolution of the process that, yeah, John Bennett, you made the statement that this would probably be a question that would come forward, and it would be a miss of any of us not to recognize that. But, you know, processes evolve all the time. Planning Commission has not always existed. The zoning board of appeals does not always exist. We have a historic, but these boards have been established for different reasons. Our policies and our procedures do change.
We're going to have to address this sort of later, that's for sure.
So a simple resolution would be any painting, writing, or artwork on public property included but not limited to streets, curbs, and sidewalks that is not washable by water, is not permitted without approval from the City of Portland County Council. And then, council, whether or not you want to seek additional support, i.e. you want to put items such as a petition or anything else with regard to an approval process. Katie Solman.
I'm good with leaving it there, and we can work on it some more. Yeah, it's much better.
So start just with the resolution as stated without a petition. Okay, is there support for that? Is that, if that is a motion to consider? Katie, could you please repeat what you just said?
I wrote it down, so yes. Resolution, any painting, writing, or artwork on public property included but not limited to streets, curbs, and sidewalks that is not washable by water is not permitted without approval from the City of Portland County Council. So Katie Solman, is that the motion to consider?
Did you have any other thoughts, John?
I always have thoughts. I need time to gather my thoughts. For now, that resolution sounds good, but I think we need to clarify that not only with legal, but maybe check legal with some other, you know, check with legal with Nikon. Wade is much more adverse with this, and he is who I communicated with way back about this. So I would think, why don't we for now hold off on resolution until we check legal standing first? Unless everybody else wants to go through something right now.
Like, wait.
Yep, I can wait too, Jen.
If we hold off, is it, I think I heard in the beginning of this conversation that it could be construed as graffiti, and graffiti is already covered in city guidance, is that correct?
I would defer to Corporation Council. Would you care to weigh in, or would you like to do more research? Or Wade?
To you.
Oh, okay. It's not graffiti if they're given permission?
I think my question is, if somebody did it without permission, it could be construed as graffiti, and there's guidance around that, is that right?
Yeah, our city code does address graffiti in the public circumstances, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion. So we were waiting on a resolution. It sounds like we have a direction to head in. I will speak with Rick Van Donzel, Rick, UNL, Wordsmith, and other recommendations. Back for council at the August fourth meeting, which is our next meeting. Any other thoughts from council before we move on on the agenda? Very good. Agenda item number 10, discussion regarding the possibility of adding electric vehicles, EV charging stations in downtown Portland, forwarded to municipal information. The New York Power Authority is a quasi-public nonprofit, and basically they're interested in taking three parking spots to, that was two rapid charging EV stations. And basically, they want an agreement that would allow them to use city property, and we can have discussions about where those spots would be located, that has not been determined. And what they would do is they would charge the fee to the users. So if you have a car that gets charged up and runs on electric, you would pay a fee, be able to charge, and these are rapid chargers, where they allow people to charge their cars up quickly. They're seeing a demand, and it is a chicken or egg argument. You need the number of vehicles for this to be viable, or you establish the charging stations, and then more people obtain the vehicles, knowing that they can drive. They are working throughout the state. I believe they're opening one down in the Hudson Valley very shortly, and there are plans for this to be up and down 81, so up into Syracuse, down to Vinington. And they are looking to have a statewide presence, and the goal is to promote electric vehicles. And I'm going to acknowledge Nick Doby, who is once again patiently holding his hand up. Nick.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I think this is a no-brainer. If you guys remember, when we did the DRI, we actually submitted an electric vehicle charging station proposal that didn't make the cut. I think the space is pretty nominal. It hasn't been determined yet, but we have tons of information from the DRI proposal that I think would, I'm sure that stuff was probably forwarded to you guys, and I think it's a benefit. Under the DRI parameters, it just, like I said three times, didn't make the cut, but I think that this is an easy project that will show a benefit to the city authorities. And most of the legwork is probably already done.
All right, if there's no real strong opinions one way or the other, we can, there is information, there's a PowerPoint that we can share and put online, and also have this as an agenda item for consideration in early August, basically giving approval. And between now and then, we don't have to make the decision tonight, but we would like to have a discussion with regards to location and where we think is appropriate. So I'll give council the opportunity, and we can discuss between now and what is for it, if that should be a council decision, a public works board decision, or if we leave it up to the company through discussion with the city in terms of where they think it would be most optimal. But this is something I'm pretty enthusiastic about. It's an opportunity that, as Nick mentioned, we considered it was a proposal for the DRI. It was one of the projects that was eliminated. There are a number of other projects, and now in retrospect, hey, this might be a good thing, because these would be at no cost to the city. Obviously, there'll be a cost for a charge to vehicle users, but the establishing of those charging stations and maintenance would be the responsibility of the company. And all we would have to do is pass snow around. And agenda item number 11, update on the Portland Forward Committee. And if there's anybody on council that wants to jump in, but we are having weekly Zoom meetings, and the Portland Forward Committee is in response to the discussions that we are having about race and racism in Portland. And I think that the next council meeting, hopefully, the group will be able and willing to share mission statement, some broad objectives, and some specific goals, and be able to have the opportunity to talk about some of the things that we can do tangible. And the main goal here with Portland Forward is education and helping people get to a place where everybody looks and says that Portland has an equitable community, and we all have opportunities across the board. Questions, discussion. Very good. COVID-19 response. Yeah, if you are following the Portland County Health Department, you are aware that the number of cases is now up into the 70s. And this should be met with at least some concern for everybody throughout the community. So a couple of months ago, we had pretty much stalled down at 40, 44 cases, and we were there for a couple of weeks. Now, we know that the activity levels are picking up, and there's some concern from people. We've opened playgrounds, churches have been able to have worshiping services, and are expanding in terms of the number of people at services, restaurants, the ability to have limited indoor seating, bars can now be open. There is some limited youth activities, and there are plans for people's information. Any of the youth activities that have been approved, they are responsible, the adult organizers for putting together their safety plans, very similar to what has been done with private very similar to what has been done with private business nonprofits and government entities. We all have to have plans about what we're doing to manage COVID-19 and to keep everybody safe, both employees and others. But this should be somewhat concerning because as the numbers go up, it means that the virus is present. I believe it was, there's about eleven current cases in the county. There's a number of people under quarantine as well, and we need to make sure that we adhere to the protocols from the state. And that's those basic things, washing hands, wearing masks, maintaining social distancing, uh, cleaning of surfaces, and I think many people have gotten into the routine. But we still do need people to pay attention and to make sure that they are doing this, not just for themselves, but for others. I'm pleased to announce that we are having monthly meetings with SUNY Portland, and we have a subcommittee that is now going to have discussions on a more frequent basis. So I received an email this week about concerns, saying that with SUNY opening, we are starting to see this uptick in cases. And let me clarify, SUNY is not open right now. There are no students on campus. Students have not come back. So this uptick is completely unrelated to the college. But we all recognize the college and its presence in our community, and the energy that approximately sixty-five hundred students bring the end of August to our community. In many years, it's met with a little bit of enjoyment, maybe some frustration, try not to drive around town on moving day. But this year is going to be different. And we are going to work very closely between the city leadership team and the SUNY leadership team, try to make sure that we are addressing issues and concerns on campus and off of campus. So we're having conversations, and what we want to do is make sure that when students come back, that they are as responsible as every other community member here in the City of Portland. And that energy when students come back sometimes is difficult. And we want to be able to inform people of what their rights and responsibilities are, which our police department and our code department has done for the last several years very well in the moving weekend. But with the additional concerns, you know, there's a lot at stake. So there's a lot at stake for the community as a whole, and it's important for us also to recognize that, uh, having the students come back does assist many of our small local businesses. And we need this to be, we need this to be successful for the success of our whole community. So we are meeting, as I said, regularly, and we are going to do everything we can to make sure that we have a plan, and we are executing a plan that will keep our year-long residents, our shorter-term residents, and our visitors, people coming into the community, safe. But this is going to take a little bit of effort on everybody's part, and it's going to require us to continue to be good neighbors. But if we are doing our part, each and every one of us, we can have a successful transition in terms of the start of the school year. We know that there's going to be a lot of questions with the public schools and what's going to happen then, but we will work with the school districts in any way that we can to help them with their transition as well. Because in a city like Portland, we can do this. We can work with one another, and we can manage and mitigate some of these real health concerns, but we need everybody to do their part. Within City Hall, we are talking about having some adjustments on second floor. We want to physically make some changes that makes it, uh, safer for our employees. And for the third time, Nick Doby patiently raising his hand. I'll acknowledge you. Nicholas?
Well, yeah, I just wanted to let you guys know that we have a plethora of safety items, whether it's, um, shields for the, the desktops, stickers, uh, signs. We have a whole bunch of stuff taking up a lot of room in my office that I would love to get out of there, um, and we will implement that sometime soon. We're ahead of, we're ahead of the curve on that.
Very good, as usual. All right, thoughts about COVID-19, the city's reaction, and what's happening in our neighborhoods? Katie Solman?
Mayor, we need some sort of protocol for what a person does if they're alarmed about a business that is open, but is not, um, does not have safe practices. So I would like to know, oh, Rick has an idea.
No idea. The, the governor's office has a, uh, a hotline to report and issue and file complaints to the attorney general. We just have to go on the governor's phone, the website, and that complaint is available for just that sort of thing.
That just seems so like going long distance with it. Do we have nothing that's closer at hand?
We, we have gotten calls, and, um, sometimes it's been phone calls to the official office, which I prefer to social media, but I have gotten messages via social media and other forums, and we're sharing with our code office and our police department. And, uh, anecdotally, I think by experience, when businesses have been approached, we have made adjustments, and we appreciate the fact that it's been done in a collaborative manner. Well, these are trying times, and there's a number of questions. And people, well, what's the penalty with this law? You know, we, the penalty is, somebody can get sick. And we shouldn't be talking about legal repercussions. We should be acknowledging the fact that what we are doing is to keep ourselves and those around us healthy. And that should be enough for people to say, okay, we're going to take these steps. And I get that some people don't like wearing masks. It may be a violation of your freedom. I find masks uncomfortable, but I wear mine, and I limit my exposure in terms of who I see and who I am with because of the importance of the people around me. So if we are all doing what we're supposed to, we will be okay. But as businesses are identified by all means, Rick is absolutely correct that the state has a website. The governor just the other day was talking about the limited number of inspectors they have for the SLA, the State Liquor Authority, for example. And they are relying on local law enforcement. And between our code department and our police department, these are some of the conversations that, um, we, we don't expect. Hey, this wasn't on the agenda of things to do back in January. This was not something that we thought we would have to do to address some of the concerns in our community. But our city staff, as always, has been receptive and flexible with meeting the needs of the community. And I do appreciate the businesses that have made the adjustments because it's better for you, it's better for all of us. Tom, Michael's?
Brian, uh, so what has the college at this point, uh, conveyed regarding keeping personnel on, on campus and, uh, limiting, uh, uh, let's say, uh, uh, dorms or whatever to, uh, even, uh, even rental property? We got, uh, parties, um, throughout the school year.
So the on-campus component, there's a lot more control over than the off-campus. And what I can do is I can reach out and ask for a presentation to council at one of our future, um, meetings. However, if you want the general plan, there is, um, a reopening plan on the SUNY Portland website. I can tell you that the campus, there's at least four different operating committees, and some are dealing with residents' lives, some are dealing with the academics, uh, the interaction between departments. So there are specific goals and specific roles that different faculty and staff have, and they are working at a very brisk pace to come up with solutions. So they are forming partnerships in terms of looking at quarantine and the need for quarantine space. Uh, the campus physician, there is a doctor on campus, has drafted a, uh, policy and procedure for all students, faculty, and staff, basically a daily check-in. And, uh, they are in communication with Dr. Ray Portland and with the county health department in terms of working with, uh, our local health providers. So, you know, the conversations in terms of what we're having, okay, what's gonna happen off-campus? Tom, I think you and I are probably thinking along the same lines. A lot of that energy, and in particular, a nice late summer afternoon, well, we, we can't have some of the same behaviors that we've seen in the years past, not safely. So that's where, uh, we need strong collaboration between SUNY and the city. And we know that they have been good partners. If you recall, back in early April, there was a student that was found in violation of the social gathering executive order from the government, and there were academic repercussions for that student. Katie Solman?
Do you have the impression that if the city were to put our own social gap in laws in place, for this difficult time, that the university would back us up in a similar fashion?
I, I believe so. As I said, for not just one campus, but for SUNY Portland and Portland Community College to be successful, they are going to need the same thing that we need, and that's for everybody to be responsible community members. So I think we all have the same goals, um, and I think we'll have the same ideas and things on how to get there, and we're working together.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Unusual times and unusual solutions, but, hey, when we work together, we can accomplish great things. I believe that covers the formal portion of our agenda. I did say we would have, if somebody will raise a hand, if they would like to have an opportunity for public comment here at the end.
All right, I got one more thing.
Uh, try back there.
Uh, next meet, uh, next meeting, can you, uh, get that Hubbard Street thing on the agenda, please?
Very good. Yeah, if we, uh, received a request for uneven parking on Hubbard Street as a petition signed by residents. And unfortunately, didn't have enough time for discussion and review before this meeting. Uh, start with Christina Fury.
All right, um, I just wanted to add a prayer as I'm working with SUNY Portland and TC3 on, um, like possible community guidelines and things like that, just to, please remember to take into account, and yes, I absolutely am speaking for, for myself here and some other friends, but, um, non-traditional students, just because those of us who have families and children, it's a little bit different than limiting our contact to, um, a frat house or the dorms, and some of those community guidelines could really cause a bad impact. Like, my children go between two households, and so that could cause a bad impact. Or, you know, if I was placed on academic probation because I was just trying to take care of my family, it's a different situation than having a block party that's working out. So just to remember that, um, non-traditional students face, especially in light of COVID, and people have time to go back to school, different challenges, just to keep in mind.
Very good. Thank you, Christina. Uh, Jeremy Stiles? I'll give you the opportunity to unread yourself. There you go.
Thank you, Brian. Just looking to see how, uh, how we get zoning questions answered. What's the process?
Uh, yeah, so, um, Rick? I've been fielding all the zoning questions. It's simply calling the same number that you call otherwise in the court that writes me. My direct line is eight four four seven one six seven.
All right, I guess I'll try that tomorrow, because I've reached out to you twice, and I haven't gotten a response.
All right, give him a call tomorrow, Jeremy.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, Matthew Slowey?
Good evening, I'm Mr. Mayor and this is council. I appreciate your time tonight. I just wanted to, uh, speak and add a few comments, uh, to the public record regarding, you know, the, the blue line painting and those types of discussions. You all have, uh, my contact information, and any questions directly apply to me. Um, I just wanted to kind of follow up with, you know, the mayor's idea of personal example. Um, this is not something that has come up as a, a knee-jerk reaction or, or, or any type of a response. Uh, it's actually something that I thought of, you know, quite a few years back, and as the climate, you know, changed, you know, my, my feelings changed, then I, I did decide to, you know, reach out to local, uh, law enforcement that I know and see that is this something that, um, you know, they're in support of, or, or would they be feel, felt like they were being pushed into something? And I'd just like to share quickly, uh, uh, some comments that were given to me from an officer in the city department, uh, in response to the first draft proposal. The comment reads, "This is seriously the nicest gesture. I mean, it made me tear up a little. I think it's an amazing thing, and whether approved, yes or no, I am just going to say, 'Thank you.'" I think that type of a comment really lets you guys know where our police is and, and where this comes from. Um, to follow up on a few more quick other points, because I'll follow up with you guys, uh, officially further on. I do think this is something unique because it's not in any other town. This gives Portland the opportunity to be on the front of something. Could this be a national thing that, uh, started in Portland? Imagine that. Imagine us being on, on the forefront of a, a national movement. And, you know, one other comment I'd say is that, you know, um, we talk about regulation, talk about petition as evolutionary process forward. That's good. Um, I think petition is coming. Um, I think that you're going to hear from, you know, the members of the community that do support this type of thing. And, and my final comment is that, you know, the role of the government is to serve the people, and that this is what the people want, that, that this is simply what the people want. Thank you, guys, and, and I do appreciate it. Look forward to working together in the future. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you, Matthew. Any further comments? Any further business to come before the council this evening? Seeing none, hearing none, I can entertain the motion to adjourn. Kat McCarthy, second, Katie Solman. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned. Stay safe, safe, friendly. Have a great evening.
Good night.
Good night, all.